Okay, so I guess we'll call to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, your God, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Solicitor, do you want to take over as temporary chairperson?
Yes, thank you, EJ. The second-class township code sets forth at organizational meetings, a solicitor shall be the temporary chairperson of the meeting for the sole purpose of taking nominations and conducting a vote for the next chairperson. So at this moment, I will open the record to nominations for the chairperson of the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors for the year 2021.
I'll make a motion for Martha Majewski.
And I'll second that motion.
It's a move and seconded that Martha Majewski be the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors this year. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. And if I had a gavel, I would hand it to Martha at this point. My duties are done, and Martha is now in charge of the meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you, Board. I hope I can do as good of a job as I have been in the past this year. So the third thing we have on our agenda is the overview of the virtual meeting protocols. EJ?
Yeah, quick overview. This meeting is a public meeting. It's being held virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The meeting's being recorded. All attendees should be able to see and/or hear the Board of Supervisors, the Township Solicitor, and myself. All attendees are muted by the GoToWebinar platform upon entering the meeting, so we cannot see or hear you. However, public participation is still permitted via the question-and-answer box on the GoToMeeting, the GoToWebinar platform. So if you have any questions or comments throughout the meeting, you can type them in. We'll be monitoring that question box throughout the meeting. If it's a question on a specific agenda item, we will read it at that time when we get to that agenda item. If it's a general question or comment on any non-agenda items, we'll read them at the end. We do have a general public comment section at the end of the regular business meeting, which will immediately follow the organization meeting.
Okay, thank you, EJ. So next item is, I will make the motion to have Mark Donovan as our vice chair. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board of Supervisors, treasurer, I will make the motion to nominate EJ. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so I made the motion, and Mark seconded it. Anna, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry about that, EJ.
Thank you.
A motion that the bond be set at $2 million at a cost paid by the township. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and a motion that the treasurer serve without further compensation. I'm sorry about that, EJ, but I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll make the motion that EJ be our township manager. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and our township secretary, I will make the motion that Madeline be our township secretary. Do I hear a second? Yeah?
Martha, this is Madeline.
Yeah.
You're working from an old agenda. If you would look at the screen.
Oh.
7B.
Oh, okay. I'm terribly sorry. You're absolutely right. I am working from an old one. We did, we did talk about that. I just thought that was the only change that was made, so never mind. Okay. 7B, the approval Township Manager Employment Agreement. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number eight. I will make the motion to have Madeline Harbison as our township secretary. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our assistant township secretary, I'll make the motion that that be EJ. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Mark, you can give a second.
I don't care.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so now I'm gonna go through these liaison positions. Again, it's gonna be number 10 through 26. So just be patient with me here, and Madeline, I will-
Do we have to do them separately? I thought one year we did like a full block.
I'm gonna do these all in one block.
Oh, great, great, okay.
I wanted to do the first, those first ones separately, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, so our administration liaison would be Fred, our fire company liaison would be Bob and Mark, our police liaisons would be Susan and Bob, our pension committee liaison would be Bob, our planning commission liaison would be Mark, our historical commission liaison would be Bob, our environmental advisory council liaison would be Susan, our open space commission liaison would be Martha, our Phoenixville area school district administration liaison would be Fred, our regional planning delegate would be Mark, the alternate delegate would be Kurt English, our tax collector, collection liaison would be me, Martha, our emergency declaration officer would be Martha, our emergency management coordinator is Moujan Loubadee. Our deputy emergency management coordinators are Bradley Berger and Dave Cosmay. Our vacancy board chair is Sandra Henze, our recycling coordinator is Jim Shaughnessy and Huff Associates, and our Chester County Solid Waste Committee representative would be Jim Shaughnessy. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
We need buzzers next time.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have no one for our planning commission, but we have-
There is one, one new appointment for the planning commission.
Oh, okay, I am working off an old one. I apologize.
Yeah, this is the one term that's been vacant. It's the unexpired vacant term.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we have Andrew Jacob as a member of our planning commission. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our zoning hearing board, we have terms expired. Marilyn Gurrell and Norm Butts. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our environmental advisory council, we have Tom Heisey, Jonathan Meyer, and Karen Hilliard as an alternate. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Our historical commission, the terms expired. Kaleo Hehe, David Kiefer, and we have two vacancies. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our open space commission, we have Timothy McAvoy. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have no one for the Valley Forge Sewer Authority.
Correct.
Okay, so these next ones, I think I'm just gonna go through.
It can be done as a block.
Yeah, I'll do these as a block. And-
If anybody, if anybody has an objection in this block voting, just speak up during the question for any comments. Other than that, it can go as a block.
Okay.
Okay. The Valley Forge Sewer Authority Joint Board Liaison would be EJ. The alternate Valley Forge Sewer Authority Joint Board Liaison would be Martha. The tax hearing officer would be EJ. Our township roadmaster is Nixon Sarapino. Our township engineer is Russ, and I forget his last name.
Benner.
Benner, thank you. Our township solicitor is Bill Brennan. Our zoning officer is-
You're, you're on the wrong one again, sorry.
I'm on the wrong one again.
The next one is the land planner.
Okay, our township land planner, that is-
Ann Hutchinson, with Ann Hutchinson.
From Natural Lands. Our zoning hearing board solicitor and the UCC appeals board solicitor is-
Patrick McKenna from Gotham, Greenwood.
Okay, our zoning officer and building code official is Kim Yocum. Our building inspector and code enforcement officer is LTL.
And they're also the alternate zoning officer.
They're also the alternate, okay. Our fire marshal is Raphael Henin. Our deputy fire marshals are Rick Beidel, and I don't have Julius's last name.
Maris Falvey.
Okay, and our fire police captain is Kim Colquet. So I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Set them, the official meeting date for the Board of Supervisors as the first Wednesday of each month. If such date falls on a holiday, the Board will meet on the day following unless advertised otherwise. The Board of Supervisors' work sessions will be held on the third Thursday of each month as required. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion to advertise the dates of the 2021 Board of Supervisors' meetings, as well as the Board of Supervisors' work sessions, the Environmental Advisory Council, Historical Commission, Open Space Commission, Planning Commission, Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, and the Zoning Hearing Board meetings. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to set- Am I working on a different?
Yeah, number three, right at the top here, the expenditure threshold.
Okay, motion to require that all expenditures in excess of $5,000 must be, must receive prior approval by the Board of Supervisors. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to set the township mileage reimbursement rate for 2021 at 56 cents per mile. The IRS 2020 business mileage rate is 56 cents per mile. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, a motion to approve the list of activities of the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company for 2021 for insurance purposes. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to appoint the voting delegate and alternate voting delegate to the PSATs Conference April 18th to the 21st, 2021. I will make the motion that we have EJ as our delegate at this point. I know Bob, you had said that you would possibly want to be the delegate for that, or Mark, but we're not really sure whether this is going to happen in person or not. So do we want to wait to vote for the delegate, or do you want to just do that now and we can make the change later?
You have to, you have to appoint someone now. In order to register for the conference, we do have to designate who our delegate is. We can change it at a later point, but someone should be appointed now. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be me. I'll happily do it, but the appointment should be made now.
Why don't we make you, EJ, because we know you're going, right? And then if somebody-
If it happens, yeah, and it's safe and advisable, then yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make the motion to appoint EJ as our voting delegate for PSATs. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve. Now, can I do these all in one, one group? Can I say Resolution 2021-01 through?
Come on, please say yes, EJ.
I, I think we did last year. I, I don't remember for sure, but I think we did. And obviously, if anyone has any questions or issues with one of these, then it should be pulled out of that. But if not, well, this is more of a Bill question than EJ question.
Yeah, you can do it. It's a matter of clarity. In addition to the number, I would certainly state the identification, for example, for 2021-01, it's depositories and signatories. So you go down that list. As long as everybody has an opportunity during the questioning to raise an issue as to any of them or ask a question, you can vote in a block, as long as it's clear at the end of the day what you did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna do these all in one block here. So we have Resolution Number 2021-01, the depositories and signatories. Resolution 2021-02, the appointment of CPA. Resolution Number 2021-03, the 2021 Township Fee Schedule. Resolution Number 2021-04, the emergency services provision. Resolution Number 2021-05, our records destruction. And Resolution Number 2021-06, the affirmation of code of conduct for supervisors of Schuylkill Township. I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll make the motion, I will make the motion to adjourn our reorg meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have six minutes, or do you guys want to just move right into our regular agenda?
I don't think we can start it early. This is one of those weird cases where we're ready to, where we're unusually ready to start the meeting early, and I don't know if we can, Bill, since it's advertised for 7:30.
The agenda says a public meeting begins at 7:00 PM.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, yeah, it does. Okay.
Yeah, because we just roll right into it.
I think we can, yeah.
Okay.
Apologies.
All right. So we already did our, our Pledge of Allegiance, but I did want to make an announcement about executive sessions. We did have an executive session that included a quorum of our Board of Supervisors at our November 30th Open Space Commission meeting. We did not mention that at our December 2nd meeting. We also had an executive session at our December 2nd meeting, which I also neglected to mention. And we had an executive session this evening, so, and we discussed potential litigation and personnel matters. And potential land acquisition at our Open Space meeting. Okay. The consent agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors through the December 2nd, 2020 business meeting. No workshop was held in December, and the acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of December 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? EJ, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
We do not.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, Madeline, we've been doing a roll call before. Do you want us to continue with that? I just, I just remembered that. Would that make it easier for you?
Um, it's not so much for me, Martha. It's for anyone who is participating in the meeting by telephone only.
Okay.
Alternatively, could announce that the vote is, you know, unanimous, and if not, if it's not a unanimous vote, then you can do a roll call.
Okay.
But if you would just announce the result after every vote, you know, four to nothing, then that's clear.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The treasurer's report and payment of bills. Consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and the approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
EJ, would you care to comment?
Yeah, I'll give a brief report. I was just finished just a little while ago before the meeting, the mad dash, the run-up to the earlier scheduled meeting. General fund as of the end of December shows a balance of $3,076,364. It's a reduction of a little over $1 million from the previous month, but that includes a half a million dollar transfer that was approved by the board last month into the Capital Roads Fund. So not really an expenditure, just an inter-fund transfer into one of our capital funds. And then the other half a million is basically two rounds of bills for December. We, we had the bills that were paid at the beginning of the month, and then we did a year-end check run, so a higher bill tally in December. All the bills were reviewed. Everything's in order. The only other fund I would mention is, all the other funds increased for the month of December, except for the state fund, our liquid fuels, which we did incur about $75,000 worth of snow removal costs for the major storm that we had a few weeks ago. But that, that account's still carrying a very healthy balance. So these numbers are all preliminary. They're unaudited, obviously. You know, when we look at the end-of-year numbers, our auditors will, will help fine-tune any coding issues or clerical issues, so. But, but that's, I'm hoping maybe to give a more detailed year-end financial report, either at our January workshop or at the February board meeting, but that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you, EJ. So there was a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? And I will do a roll call here again. So Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan? I can't hear you.
Aye, yes.
Bob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. Madeline, can you scroll down a little? Thank you. Okay, do we have any two-minute reports from board liaisons? I don't know that anybody met this month.
Planning Commission did.
Okay.
We had a meeting to discuss the property on Dawson Drive, and it's, I think they're, let's see, they have a zoning hearing board, potential, potential zoning hearing board meeting that they're trying to schedule. So that'll come up on the agenda within, I don't know, for February, EJ?
It's what it's looking like. Yeah, date hasn't been set yet, but it's looking like-
Okay, thanks.
Possibly the middle of February.
So, yeah, they're discussing warehouse on the property at 140 Dawson, and that was discussed by the planning commission.
Okay, any other board liaisons? No? EJ, do you have a two-minute report?
Just, just a little bit of kudos to our road department and police department for the handling what was a really hectic early winter snowstorm back a couple of weeks ago. They were, they were out plowing and treating the roads for, for almost 24 hours. So they, they did a great job. As is always, our township roads were among the best and most easy to traverse in the area. It was not an easy storm, though, and they really did a great job. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Old business. Update the COVID-19 Township operations and protocols. EJ?
Not much has changed. All of our meetings are still virtual indefinitely. The township building remains close to the public, and staff is working kind of a rotating hybrid schedule of a couple of days a week in the office and then working remotely from home the rest of the time. We are monitoring the, you know, the news coming out regarding the COVID vaccine and, and, you know, see what we can do as far as getting township staff vaccinated if they're willing to. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, great. So, EJ, I did have a couple of questions from some residents wondering about the rollout for vaccines. Is that information found on the county website?
In terms of the, like, the different phases and which-
Yes.
Yes, that is all on the Chester County Department of Health website.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, the next item, discussion, the new case wheel loader, purchase versus lease options. EJ, I'm gonna hand that right back over to you.
Yeah, so this is a follow-up item from something that was, was actually already approved by the board last month, but there were some lingering questions. We had budgeted for this new loader based on a five-year lease, and we were given options of basically the, a five-year lease, a six-year lease, or buying it outright. And the question was raised last month. The board approved the five-year lease, but the question was raised whether or not the board wanted to revisit that to avoid paying the interest. The quick summary is a five-year lease over the life of the, it's a lease purchase over the life of the lease. The interest amounts to about 1.5%, so it's about $11,500. If you were to go with a six-year lease, it'd be about $3,000 more in interest you'd pay over the life of the lease. Or obviously, if you paid it outright, you, you would avoid any interest. Typically, the, these are for these heavy pieces of capital equipment for the road department. I, I wouldn't say it's the case right now with the market being where it is, but we can typically get better interest rates on some of our CDs or money markets than what we're paying in interest on the lease. That's not the case right now. Everything's below 1.5%, but over the term of the five-year lease, we might make that up. But it's also a way to avoid incurring a major capital hit in one year, spreading the payments out over, over five years. And a 1.5% rate is, is pretty darn good for a $160,000 piece of equipment. So, and the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, you, you could just stick with the five-year lease as already approved, and you can pay it off early at any time without any penalties. So if the board decided, you know, next year, you know what, we don't want to pay any more interest on this, we want to pay it off entirely, then you could do that. So- any more interest on this, we want to pay it off entirely, then you could do that. So, what I would recommend would be, I certainly want to go with the six-year lease. We've already budgeted for the five-year. I would just recommend sticking with it, which wouldn't require any action from the Board right now. But alternatively, if you really don't like the idea of paying any interest, then you could make a motion to purchase this outright using the reserves in the Capital Roads Fund.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions? No? EJ, do we have any public comment or questions about this?
We do not.
Okay. Consideration of Approval of the Valley Forge Fire Company Equipment Purchase/Ownership Agreement. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
EJ, would you care to comment on this? Or Bill, or Mark, or Bob?
Yeah, I'll give a quick, this is an agreement that we've been working on with the fire company for a number of months, to basically update an agreement that was put in place, we think sometime around maybe 2006 or '07 or so. And the idea behind this is to account for the township's capital contribution to the fire company in purchasing their heavy equipment, their fire trucks and their engines. Basically, what it says in a nutshell is, if the township pays for, you know, 100% of the cost of a new fire truck, the township basically owns 100% of it. If the township pays for half the cost, the township is 50% owner. And in the event that the fire company were to ever close-up shop, the township would basically, if the township was 100% owner, they would get those vehicles back. If the township owned a percentage of it, they would have basically the first option to pay the remaining percentage to take ownership over it. And it also accounts for procedures for future capital purchases that the township contributes to.
Okay. It's been, there's a motion that was, had been made, and a second, and there was, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Mark? Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. New Business, the Municipal Complex Capital Purchases. Consideration of Approval for a Lease Purchase of an ESIE-SIP 50 Evolution Series Telephone System for $8,910 from Phone America PA, per the PA Sales Agreement dated 12/1/2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second? I can't hear anyone.
One second.
Yes, second.
Okay. Alright, EJ?
This item has been, we kind of put this off for a couple of years, that the phone systems are very old that we have here, and we've been having a lot of issues with them in terms of reliability and call quality, and also because they're so old, the maintenance has run out on them. They can't get parts for them. So, we had this budgeted for last year. We decided to put it off for one more year, and so this was approved in the 2021 budget. We did shop this around, looked at a couple of different companies, and ultimately ended up with Phone America, which is the company we've been using for our service contract. Got a really good price for this phone system, and especially with some of the, this is a phone system designed to help us out with working remotely. Employees will be able to basically mimic their office phones from their cell phones, so they can make a phone call on days they're working from home, and, you know, without worrying about their personal cellphone number being out there and available to the public. It's a good phone system, and the annual, the annual service contract on it is about half the price as what we're currently paying as well. So, over the course of, over the life of this system, we'll realize some savings. We currently pay about $2,000 a year for the service contract, and that's, that cost is driven by the age of the phone system. So, and with the Board's approval, we would pretty much get this order started right away, and probably a few weeks until installation, and try to get the new system in place as quickly as possible.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? EJ, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
We do not. The only other thing I would mention, I apologize, I forgot, that this item, along with the two following it, are all to be paid out of the Municipal Complex Fund, which, so these are not general fund purchases. These are capital purchases for the Township Building.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I was looking at the agreement, or the quote, and it has a note at the bottom that's guaranteed for 30 days, and the quote was given on December 1st. Did that need to be renewed, or did they renew it?
I did confirm with the salesman that the quote was still good, the last week, the week before New Year's. He knew that we were meeting on the 4th.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that didn't-
Yeah, that's always a concern. A lot of times when we get these types of quotes, they're only good for-
Yeah.
-short period of time.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The Consideration of Approval for the Purchase of a Video Intercom/Access Control System from CoStarz Vendor Crime Intervention Alarm Incorporated CIA for $7,200 and a $45 monthly service fee per the CIA Proposal dated 12/3. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
EJ, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, this is a new intercom system for both the administration entrance and the police entrance, audio and video intercom. And it will, it provides an access control release function, so if and when we get to the point where we're ready to reopen the Township Building to the public, we will have better control over who can come into the building without, you know, basically putting our employees out into the lobby to let people in. We had quoted this out from a different vendor, maybe about six or seven months ago, and we had talked about it. We weren't thrilled with the quote that we got, so we shopped this around some more. And CIA is a, we use them currently for our surveillance system. They are CoStarz vendor as well, and this was a, we felt a better system that fit our needs and was about $1,500 less expensive.
Yeah, that's great. That's good. Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
No.
Okay. Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Consideration of Approval for the Purchase of a Security Camera System from CoStarz Vendor Crime International, I'm sorry, Crime Intervention Alarm Incorporated CIA for $55,750 and a $300 monthly service fee per the CIA Proposal dated 11/15/2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. EJ, comments?
Very similar. This is something we've been talking about and kind of shopping around. It was, it was included in the 2020 budget to replace the camera system, and we deferred that cost. So, it was rolled over into the 2021 budget. The camera system we have now is, some of the cameras anyways are the original system from when this building was built more than 20 years ago. Some newer ones have been added. So, the newest ones, this is actually going to incorporate into the system, but it's adding, it's adding a couple of different new cameras to the exterior to cover a couple of blind spots, and it's also adding some cameras down at the road department facility, where there's currently only one camera. So, there's, we have a lot of equipment, a lot of expensive equipment down there that doesn't really have adequate surveillance. And so, this is, it's a full replacement of the system, along with all the software for monitoring. I will actually have access to be able to monitor the surveillance system as well, which I currently do not have. And again, same vendor as the previous agenda item, CoStarz approved, so all of the bidding and procurement requirements are met through that process, through the state's cooperative purchasing requirements for local governments.
Okay.
EJ, having put in my own kind of cameras at different places, that seems like a lot of money for outdoor cameras. Is that because our township, or a township has to have special cameras, or is there a reason why it's so expensive?
So, some of them, Chief would probably be the better person to answer specific questions than me. He specced this out, but some of them are high-definition cameras, and the exterior ones are all infrared. Actually, I think they're all infrared, but the exterior ones basically have night vision. They can also be rotated. I'm speaking like a real camera novice here. I don't know a whole lot about the system. The Chief is on the meeting. I could, you know, if you have specific questions, I could bring him up to answer any of them, but I don't know, as far as from a law enforcement perspective in terms of what the needs are, he can definitely speak to that better than I can.
Can we put him on?
Make sure he's still, yeah. Yes. Can you, hold on. Can you hear Chief? He's coming in through my speaker. Alright, so Chief, talk to me, and then I'll relay it to the Board. Okay, so they're replacing all of the cameras that we have right now with high-def cameras. Some of them will have night vision, so, you know, they pick up everything at night. So, some of the cost drivers are adding the newer cameras and all of the wiring down at the road department garage, where there currently is none of that infrastructure in place. Anything else, Chief? Extra monitors. It's adding to the size of the camera system as well. I think it's a 24-camera system, Chief? Yeah. 24 cameras, so.
So, it's not just the cameras, it's also the installation and the wiring?
Yeah, this is, this includes everything, and the monitoring, the software, and the training for how to use it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do we have any public comment?
Do we have a-
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Do we pay a monthly fee under our current service agreement?
Yes, it's $212 a month, so this would be an increase.
Because of the extra cameras, probably. Yeah.
I think it's adding a total of six additional cameras, based on what the current system has.
Right. Just wanted to make sure we weren't, like, way out of scope on a monthly fee either, so.
So, EJ, is this what other township, I have to say, as a private person who has cameras outside of a rental property, like, this is a lot of money, but is this what other townships have? So, would we, are we doing what's consistent with what other townships have in terms of outdoor cameras and security?
I think so. I mean, the only experience I can speak from is where I used to work, we went through a similar process. We had a 20-plus-year-old camera system that was the original surveillance system from when the building was built, and it was a smaller system. I think that only had 12 cameras, but it was, it was about $30,000 to replace the whole system. So, this is double, double the size. That was also all one building, one location. This is technically two different locations, which might be driving the cost up a little bit more. So, I mean, as far as the price goes, it certainly is a lot of money. I don't, I, it's, this is what these types of systems cost.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have any public comment or questions, EJ?
No.
No? Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Resolutions and Ordinances. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2021-07, Establishing Procedures and Rules for Compliance with the Pennsylvania Right to Know Law and the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records Fees and Protocols. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
EJ, do you have any comment on this? I mean, I think it was pretty self-explanatory, but-
Yeah, we don't do this resolution every year. Normally, it's just a motion to appoint the right, the right-to-know officer, but the state last year updated the fee schedule, the Office of Open Records. So, this resolution is kind of like our comprehensive right-to-know policy, and so we pretty much updated it to be consistent with the state's updates. So, we really only update this resolution when there's a need to from the state.
Okay.
But that's all it does. It just, it just changes the fees that we can charge for record requests.
Okay, alright. Any comments or questions from the Board? EJ, is there any public comment or questions?
There's not.
Okay. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Additional Business. I have one thing here. I'd like to make a motion to authorize our Township Solicitor and our Township Engineer to oppose the Zoning Hearing Board 2020-04 application. I've made that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? EJ, well, you know, I guess we wouldn't have any public comment or questions on that.
There are not.
Okay. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Do we have any other additional business, EJ?
I don't have any.
Okay. I do have two announcements here that Madeline had written up for me. Pennsylvania is in the midst of a spike in positive COVID-19 cases. There were 657, excuse me, 657,292 positive cases in Pennsylvania as of January 2nd, 2021. It is imperative that everyone take precautions to slow the spread of COVID-19. The Board of Supervisors strongly urges township residents to follow all mitigation orders put in place by the Governor Wolf, such as wearing masks anytime you leave your home, practicing social distancing in public, avoiding gatherings, and downloading the COVID-19 app to your telephone, to your phone. Detailed information on the mitigation guidelines and the vaccination program in the Pennsylvania may be found on the PA.gov Responding to COVID-19 webpage and the Chester County Coronavirus-COVID-19 site. To safeguard our residents and employees' health and safety, the Schuylkill Township offices will remain close to the public until further notice. Staff are working remotely and responding to emails and voicemails. All public meetings will be held virtually. Together, we can make a difference, slow the spread of the virus, and save lives. The second announcement I have is that Township offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th for the Martin Luther King Day holiday. Does anyone have any other announcements? Okay. Public comment, EJ, do we have any public comment?
Um, no, we do not have any.
Okay.
Hey, Martha, sorry, I was muted. I think it's worth noting, because there's been some confusion with some residents, that our staff is actually providing all township services while working from home, and the, our services have not been diminished by COVID. They've just moved out of our offices, so it's just a quick clarification.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything else? The only thing I wanted to add is we do have a couple of agenda items for our January 21st Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting, which will be held on January 21st at 7:00 PM. So, um, other than that, I will make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, and I'm not going to do a roll call on this one.
Aye.
All right, everyone, have a very good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year. All right, bye.
Have a good night.